Please be seated. Good afternoon, councillors. Welcome to this Redcar in Cleveland Borough Council on Thursday the 27th of April 2023. Can I ask all of you to make sure that your mobile phones are either switched off or placed on silence, please? Please, could I remind members that we are now in the pre-election period of per day as it is known? Obviously, we are able to continue with normal business during this time, but as you will know, there is a restriction on council resources being used for political purposes and therefore, could I ask you to bear this in mind during the meeting and avoid straining to matters that may might be construed as electioneering? Agenda item one is apologies for absence and I've received apologies from councillor King, Watts, Jones, Laxkeeler and he, Geoffrey. Do we have any other apologies?
Jaldine Williams is running late. Glenn Pallister as well, please. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Okay, thank you. Item agenda two is to receive declarations of interests. The forms should be on your desks. If you have any declarations of interests, please complete. Item three is to confirm the accuracy of the minutes of the meeting held on the 30th of March 2023. Can I have someone move them, please? Thank you councillor Gallagher. Thank you councillor Lanigan. Item four is to note the attendance matrix. Noted. Item five is to receive any communications from the mayor, the leader or cabinet members. I will have something to say at the end of the meeting, but councillor Gallagher has just informed me and I was aware of it because I did receive an email that the Yorkshire regiment who are, what's the word I'm looking for? Freedom of the borough holders have now been given the title of the Royal Yorkshire Regiment. So on your behalf, I will be sending a letter congratulating them on that. Does the leader have any announcements?
Mayor. I would like to highlight an excellent project where our council with volunteers created a beautiful garden at Redcar Cemetery. It's the Peter Rabbit themed garden which is dedicated to children who sadly lost their lives. And it was an initiative of the Friends of Redcar Communitet Cemetery Group and I'd like to thank them very much. I'm so pleased that that ambition actually became a reality and it's a great example of working alongside the community. We now have the roots that some of the country's best cyclists will take in the British National Event in June. Redcar will host the one kilometre circuit race and Salkburn will be the starting and finishing point. And there's a longer ride that actually will be linking into North Yorkshire. The championships will be a great advert for the beautiful borough and we're proud to hold this once again. I'm also, it's fantastic to see the success of the young people who have gained a great starting life through our young persons paid work experience. This is the fourth year that we've actually welcomed young people aged between 16 to 18 to start work across the council and gain practical experience, which hopefully will be a huge help to them as they step into the workplace. The success was recognised by a lovely reception hosted by Mr Mayor and we wish the all young people every success for their future careers. I would like to thank colleagues who made an area safer for our residents by securing a closure on a house which had been the centre of some serious antisocial behaviour. Residents in Broughton who'd lived with drug abuse and gangs branching knives and machetes in the street. No one should have to live like that. Our staff worked with Cleveland Police and our PCSOs to take the case to court and a secure order for closure was granted. Members, we are now very close to the coronation and residents will be gathering to mark momentous events. Street parties will be held and the council will screen the event at Redcar High Street after the success of the Queen's Jubilee celebration. I'm quite sure that people in Redcar and Cleveland will share pride in another royal occasion going forward. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Do any cabinet members have any announcements? Councillor Fogel.
West, a change to the agenda, please, that in the questions section, if question six and seven could be moved forward to position four and five so that all my questions can come together as councillor Gallagher and myself have got another meeting just after four o'clock.
Do we have a second for that proposal? Do I have a second? Okay, thank you councillor Lanigan. Do we have general agreement in relation to that proposal? Councillor Richardson? Councillor Richardson, can you stand, please?
Can I just point out question seven was for councillor Hunt.
Councillor Fogel, can you just come on that and clarify the situation?
In discussion with the officers and cabinet members, the questions six and seven were moved across to my side.
Is everyone happy that we move question four and, sorry, the two questions that were directed to councillor Fogel forward? Okay, I don't want to have anyone disagreeing with that. Do any other cabinet members have any announcements? No, thank you. Agenda item six is to receive any announcement from the managing director. John, do you have any announcements?
I do, Mr Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to thank all councillors for their contribution to the council and their communities over the last four years. I believe the council is richer because of your input, which we've done through policy formulation, in-depth discussions and appropriate challenge on performance and the journey that we've been on. I know that some of you are not standing in the forthcoming elections and that some of you will not be successful in those elections. I would urge you all to still have Redcar and Cleveland Council in your thoughts as you still look to support your communities. Please continue to challenge and to advocate for the council in equal measures from your individual community vantage points. As you know, we have a council elections next week and the count and declarations on Friday the 5th of May. For all those successful candidates, please enjoy the King's coronation and the extra bank holiday. But come Tuesday the 9th of May, let's all be ready for invigorated action. I have a team working on draft corporate plans, a workforce strategy and we will be looking to share with you the recent staff survey on staff's thoughts of what we are doing right, but also what we need to do better. No one knows the future political shape of this council, but that will present itself before we have the annual council on the 25th of May. So for now, enjoy the last week's accounting and the door knocking and let me finish by thanking you once again. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, John. Agenda item seven is that we have no questions received from the public, so we'll move on to agenda item eight, which is to receive reports from portfolio holders. And today is the report of a cabinet member for climate, environment and culture, councillor Westbury. Can I just remind councillors, a period of 10 minutes or such a longer period that my discretion will be set aside for the questions which must be succinct and relate directly to matters within the report. Councillor Westbury, would I like to give you a report?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking the officers, because this is my last opportunity in full council to say that before the elections, especially Chris, Laura, Patrick and Brian and the wider team within portfolios. I'm not going to go through the portfolio word for word because there's 26 pages, it's a very big document. So I'm just going to pick out some of the highlights or what I consider some of the highlights in the report. So this portfolio was only formed in 2021 and merged together. So this is really our first full year of having some full data, I suppose. So I'd like to start by saying we have, as a council, with some of the changes we've undertaken underneath the climate change portfolio, managed to achieve a 1.4 kiloton reduction of carbon emissions by the council, which works out at about 19% compared to the year 2021, which is a massive reduction. And I can't thank the team enough for the support in managing to make that happen. Our borough is a little bit different to every other borough in the country pretty much because 80% of our borough's emissions come from industry. The majority of the country's emissions come from people's houses. So we have a little bit of a difference picture, but we have managed to build a Tees Valley cluster of industry working to decarbonise and some of the green industries coming to the Wilton site are very much on board and online with decarbonising. Moving on through that report, we've increased our electric vehicle charging points now up to 53 hours of hours within the borough. That's only replacing two existing ones. And we've tried to put them as close locality wise for those people who don't have off-street parking. Yeah, don't have off-street parking so they can charge for the terrace houses and the street houses where having charging points on your drive just isn't an option. We've reduced our domestic emissions with the LAD project and the HUG project. It's in the report, I'm not going to go into too much detail there, but we've been very successful with the implementation of those. We have reduced our carbon emissions within the buildings, our gas reduction has gone down by, let me get the number right, 2,600 megawatt hours over the previous year. That's equivalent of a 20% drop and 490 tonnes of carbon. These are big numbers. These are not little scratching around games. We've also reduced our electricity and we've introduced an LED lighting scheme and sensors to go into all the buildings so we can reduce that electricity consumption even further. Things like the solar panels on the roofs are making a massive difference and are being far more productive than we ever thought possible. Our council fleet, we've enhanced that again, reducing our diesel vehicles. And by June this year, we'll have 36 electric vehicles. There has been a bit of a delay with electric vehicle delivery, which is why they're not here now. But that is a national issue, that's not just for us. And we now have three of our road sweepers which we got last year, which are now running on HFO, which is the vegetable fat, which is about half the amount of carbon reduced from diesel. So we're trialling that and that seems to be working very, very well. We've also, because obviously it's not just about buildings and cars, we've also got some procurement schemes in place, so we've had our first carbon neutral roads resurfacing scheme. And the scheme has worked exceptionally well and the company that's doing that are certified as carbon neutral. And if we can do more on the procurement side like that, that just massively reduces our carbon footprint. We've also got the new building management project in place and that's shown real good results in reducing our carbon within our buildings. We've been working not just within the council but in the wider borough, so we're a Tees Valley Wildlife Trust and we've been developing the biodiversity strategy with the 19,000 trees which we've planted throughout the borough. And we've also committed to no peat based fertilisers throughout the borough as well. We're working on community projects as well, like the Pippin Orchard up at Kirkleatham, which is going to increase our preplanting but also support our wider community. And we're also working with National Parks and the Forestry England to work towards the Gateway Project, which is going to be based up at Gisborough, to link those areas all together. Swapping to the other side of my portfolio, the museum up at Kirkleatham has had a very, very busy year. 100,000 visitors plus extra to the grounds. Lots of people commenting and contacting us to say, is it still free? Yes, yes, our museum is free, it's going to remain free. You can always come and visit us. We've now got the cafe in the museum, so that site is now expanded to also offer food with the new operators in place. Moving on to our libraries, we're well underway with the library review. And that's now closed to the public while we analyse the findings from that. But we've also for the last 12 months been trialling lots of new programmes within our libraries. I'm not going to go into the details of all in the report there, but lots of them have been very welcome and very much appreciated by the public, engaging both adults and youngsters within the library, encouraging reading, but also encouraging socialising, knit and natters, knit and natters even, sorry. And we've also been using our libraries as warm spaces. That started in October last year, has been absolutely vital. And we think that we have seen about 3,500 people use those libraries specifically just as warm spaces. Shows a need within the borough for that to happen. And that's including giving out those vital warm packs as well. Within the library setting, we also have Ormsby Library which has now reopened and is looking beautiful. If everybody hasn't been, they really do need to go up and see that, how amazing that really old building has been turned around. There's lots and lots of other parks going on, lots of events that we've gone in there, all within the report. I'm not going to go into each one. Customer services have been very busy as always. Let me get the number right. 98,279 phone calls in the last year through switchboard and through the phone calls, with an additional 5,299 live chats and 27,204 emails. So the team have been working really hard on responding to a lot of them. The steam data is in there, that's our visitor data that's in there and that pretty much follows the same as the national statistics. I'm not going to go into into great details on those bits. And then on to our destination management plan with our wider borough. Follows that on and that incorporates the Enjoy Redcar Cleveland and our digital platforms there. And then our events team is listed. There's too many events. We've done so much this year that there's too many events to go through individually. And the culture project's also the same. We have in here the creative health documents and the pieces we've been doing with Arts Council for the creative health project and the four pilot projects are included in there and they've been really, really well received. And I think, I'm going to leave it there, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Westbury. Councillor Brown?
Thank you for your report councillor Westbury. Councillor Quarkman who's not here has asked me to ask you how long the shelter on the seafront will remain inaccessible and unrepared.
Yeah, councillor Westbury?
Yeah, I don't know is the answer to that. It's not sitting under my portfolio. I can ask that question and find out, but it sits within street, street, not culture.
Councillor Turner?
... expenditure since 2015. With that in mind, can the councillor tell me what the current cabinet stance is on progressing the option agreement for the proposed development of Portum Arena, a multi-use conference event and entertainment venue on the site of the old Cotten Ball, which would surely bring much needed visitors and their spending power to both Redcar and the wider borough? Could the councillor also, or the councillor also reports shows a number of events organised are supported by the council. Many of these are well received across the borough, but the visitors' numbers and impact on the local economy are at best a mixed bag. Could I ask therefore what criteria is used in deciding which events to support? As I would have summarised, that something like Redcar's Blam Blam Fever, which attracts over 2,000 attendees, would benefit greatly from any support our council can give. The organisers along with many others are consistently overlooked. And finally, given the report states that we planted 19,000 trees last year, can she confirm the council's position in relation to an in-house arborist as the ongoing maintenance and care required for all trees across the borough should really be considered as should the sighting of the new plantings? As quite frankly, some of the positions within my own ward will cause significant damage to residents' properties in the years to come.
Councillor Westbury?
Thank you. I don't think I can discuss the arena because it's not within my report. And as close to elections we are, I think I'd be on very, very iffy ground commenting on that. But criteria for events, it's probably easier to email that across to you. There is a criteria for what events, it basically matches up with the destination management plan. So there's various criteria that have to meet within that destination management plan, but that's probably easier to see in writing than me to go through it in front of you. And there is an in-house arborist, but we, as we all know, that team is short-staffed at the moment and we are currently recruiting into that post, but it doesn't actually sit within my portfolio either.
Thank you councillor Westbury. Councillor Sue, Geoffrey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Westbury for the report. It was, I too found it very interesting. Just in terms of the reduction of emissions, you'll be aware that the Tees Valley Energy Recovery Facility, which is our incinerator project that we're doing with the five other boroughs and with Durham and Newcastle, recently was turned down for funding that would have seen it be zero carbon in the future. So it didn't get its carbon capture and storage funding from the government. I just wondered what plans the authority has to ensure that the incinerator is still, as far as possible, net zero going forward? Because already there are concerns amongst a lot of people about the emissions from this proposed project.
Councillor Westbury?
The energy from waste facility is being built, again, isn't one of my projects, I have to say, and isn't in my report. But it is obviously very important from a carbon reduction point of view. The building is, the plant is being built to reduce carbon as much as possible with the facility and the structure in place so that that carbon capture can be added at a later date. We can but hope that that funding becomes available and if not, we are going to have to look at alternatives to see if we can find that funding from elsewhere. At the moment, there isn't funding available elsewhere, certainly from not within the council to have that expert moment.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for your report portfolio holder. First of all, quick comment on steam figures. I don't know why we're still using them. They're out of date, not that you're making them out of date, but they always are and in this year particularly. So I do hope that the local authority is looking to try and invest in getting more market research that is more informative and more productive. On page 29, we refer to the blue flag. This is still flying. This was awarded on the based on figures for 2021 on water quality. That water quality failed last year to meet the standards needed for a blue flag to be awarded. But here we are, at this time of year in 2023, still flying something we do not merit. So please, could it be taken down tomorrow? Otherwise, we are giving the total wrong impression to members of the public visiting the borough. On page 34, we're advised that there is going to be a further round of public consultation on libraries in the summer. We'll be exhausted with all this consultation. Do we really need this? So my question really, Mr Mayor, is when will the library strategy be being rolled out to members so we can all have an informed discussion and agree a strategic plan?
Thank you councillor Thompson. Councillor Westbury?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree steam figures are out of date. Unfortunately, nationally, that's what we use. And until nationally that picture changes, we have to do that to be comparable with other areas. But I do agree there are far better ways to gather that data. I'll pass along the great blue flag bit to that. The library consultation which goes out in the summer is the follow-on to the one that's just closed. So we've just closed a public consultation. We're currently going through all of that data, reviewing all of that information. We will then put together a plan as to what we think needs to happen going forward. But in order for that plan to go forward, we need to then publicly consult on what that plan is, which is why there's a second part of it. It's all the same one. It does feel like we've been asking people in libraries a lot just lately. But this means hopefully by the back end of this year, we'll have a plan in place, we'll start implementing those bits and our library services will be fit for our public.
Thank you councillor Westbury. Councillor Corley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you councillor for your report. Can I just ask within, and I do know that tourism and culture sits within you. So you haven't mentioned, within your report, you mentioned the Kirkleatham Museum, but that is now, and it's something as a borough, we do not do very well at advertising where our inclusive equipment are. And I do know that the funding is there for changing places. So that would then make Kirkleatham grounds fully inclusive. It is paramount to so many families to know where, one, changing places are. Two, where there's adequate equipment and play for their children and young adults to access. So we need to be signposting and putting them within our destination guides. We don't. We have just made our beach a fully accessible beach, yet it's missing in your report. Thank you.
Councillor Westbury?
As soon as that change in place is in place, that will be fully advertised across the whole borough. That'll go out there. I don't advertise it before it's in place because if we end up with a delay and it's a week behind, that just is horrendous if somebody turns up and can't use it because it's not there. So as soon as it's up and running and in place, we'll absolutely get that out to the whole borough. The beach, you're right, is fully accessible now. It doesn't, again, quite sit under my portfolio, that project, which is why it's not included in the in the report. But again, we do need to, as we often say, we're very good at doing things, we're not always great about telling everybody about the good things we need to do. We're working on that on the new website, we're doing that with the social media. We have upped our game certainly with the amount of posts that are being put out across the various channels. But we can always do better and I think that's the answer. We can always do better. And we all need to work together, everybody in the room and all the officers, on how And we all need to work together, everybody in the room and all the officers, on how we get this word of mouth out there, so that people know where these accessible areas are. Whether that means we, we speak to people particularly, it's difficult to get out there, but I think we just need to increase our presence and let people know. And, and I think that goes not just for my portfolio, but for all portfolios. The press are brilliant about telling us all the stuff that we're not very good at, but we're not very good about telling everybody about the stuff we are doing really well. And we do need to work on that.
Thank you councillor Westbury, and we would please know we have no more questions. Thank you for your report. Item, agenda nine is to consider the reports and reports of the leader of the council, decisions taken under urgency provisions. Councillor Lanigan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I just ask council members who requested to note the following decision that's been taken under urgency provision? Quite sure that members are all aware about the urgency provision that we've actually got here. I understand that councillor Sheila Holley, Chair of Adults, was consulted on this. This actually pertains, members, to that the council was experiencing problems with sourcing packages of social care support to be delivered into people's homes. The problem, of course, was exacerbated by increased demand on health services, meaning that there was a greater push for hospital patients to be discharged as soon as possible. The council wished to vary the terms of the current residential care agreement with four LTV care person providers to enable a number of care beds within each facility to be block booked. The local authority, this was for the sole purpose of supporting Redcar and Cleveland residents, who were discharged from an acute hospital setting. The agreement, of course, would enable the local authority to deliver all its responsibilities, just to let members know. The funding for this initiative was delegated through NHS Grant for two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three to social care for the particular purpose of hospital discharge. And of course, the call-in was disapplied due to the immediate need for hospital social work teams to be enabled to facilitate that. The cost to members of this was five hundred thousand pound. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lanigan, do I have a second here, please? Thank you councillor Kay. Does anyone wish to make any comments or questions in relation to that report? Councillor Robins.
If I may, I think this was one of these absolutely vital decisions that need to be made. And I have seen it in action at a recent visit to a care home. And it just gives a longer time and appropriate setting to assess people correctly and to see whether in fact they may be able to be discharged from that setting into their own home with further packages, or whether in fact they may need to have more residential care and go into a care home. So it just gives us an excellent breathing space, but also alleviates some of the pressures on getting people discharged from hospital. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Robins. If we have no one else making comment, can I have general agreement to move that item? Okay, thank you. Item ten is to consider motions, we don't have any motions today. Agenda item eleven is to point members, and there are no changes to any reports. Agenda item twelve is to reply to questions from members of the council. And our first question today is from councillor Thompson to councillor Foggall, the Cabinet Member for Highways and Transport. Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My questions are really important, I'm sure all the others are. But because of time, and I understand the need for members to press on, I'm going to take my questions as read.
Councillor Foggall.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Thompson, thanks for your question. In gas-trams, they are both the same weight and are balanced when empty. The weight of passengers is lifted by filling the top car with water to provide a greater weight in the top car than the passengers in the lower car. This weight imbalance results in the heavier car descending, pulling up the lighter car. The weight limit of the team's trans has not changed as the water tanks have remained the same. However, the weight of passengers has significantly changed since the lift was originally constructed. At the time of construction, the average adult weight was sixty-three kilograms. Today, the average weight is in the region of seventy-eight kilograms, which I think is actually quite a light estimate. I would expect it to be heavier than that. As the water tank's capacity has remained the same, the amount of weight lifted has remained the same. However, the average passenger weight has increased, resulting in a reduced limit on passenger numbers. If required, the cars could be upgraded by installing larger water tanks to allow increased passenger numbers in the future. But that would be subject to checks on the rest of the system, including the safety aspects of the trams. Introduction of modern safety systems that manage the safety and speed of the trams also impacts on the number of passengers that can be safely transported as required by lifting operations legislation. That's LoLer. The LoLer took over control of the safety of the tram last year from the railway authorities.
Councillor Thompson, do you have a supplementary question?
Mr Mayor, clearly, thank you for the, and explanation. And clearly that has implications in operation. So my supplementary question is, will you please arrange, as a matter of priority, for a full detailed business plan for the Saltburn Cliff Lift to be prepared and brought to the next relevant scrutiny and improvement committee, and so contribute to an improved management of the Saltburn foreshore area?
Councillor Foggall.
I will put that to the management team and ask them to come back to you in writing with an answer to it, as I cannot give you an answer straight away. And it will be someone else's portfolio after the election, so they will have to make the decision.
Thank you councillor Foggall, our second question is again from councillor Thompson and again to councillor Foggall, the Cabinet Member for Highways and Transport. Councillor Thompson.
Again, Mr Mayor, I'll take this question as read.
Thank you councillor Foggall.
Caledonian Borough Council are working with external parties to complete the repair to the wall. Skelton Beck is a main river, and as such, appropriate approvals and permits are required to carry out remedial works from the Environment Agency. By the time of the collapse, no activities could take place in the river due to fish breeding season. Sealed dumpy bags have been permitted to be placed in the river to prevent further slippage and potential of material to enter the Beck causing contamination. As of the eighteenth April, a topographical survey has been undertaken, arrangements are being made for ground investigation to understand the method of failure and decide on remedial actions. Once completed, the appointed contractor will design the repair and will commence on-site at the earliest opportunity once approvals have been received from the EA.
Thank you councillor Foggall, councillor Thompson, do you have a supplementary?
I have, Mr Mayor, thank you. Members perhaps need reminding that it is over five months since this slippage took place. So my supplementary question is, will you please ensure, as a matter of priority, that Saltburn, the main visitor attraction within the borough of Redcar and Cleveland, has a detailed maintenance plan for the foreshore area drawn up and submitted to the next relevant scrutiny and improvement committee, and so contribute to an improved management of the Saltburn foreshore area?
Thank you councillor Thompson, councillor Foggall.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Same answer as the last question. I will ask the officers to take it to the next postholder, and they will then come up with a response which will be sent to you in writing. What you have to remember is it may have been going for five months, but EA has its own management system, which is even slower than anything in the council. And therefore, we, we have to wait for them to make their decisions before we can actually do anything. We cannot work, make any decisions ourselves on, on EA issues.
Thank you councillor Foggall. Question three, question from councillor Corley to councillor Foggall, the Cabinet Member for Highways and Transport. Councillor Corley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll just take the question as read and await for the answer, thank you.
Thank you councillor Corley, councillor Foggall.
Safer Streets process allows residents to submit requests for various traffic calming measures in residential areas. The process involves a resident acting as a lead and canvassing neighbours for support. However, submission of a Safer Streets pact does not guarantee implementation of a scheme. All applications are subject to feasibility and second stage consultation, as well as looking at safety aspects. We have not received a recent Safer Streets application for removal of the give-and-take build-outs in this location. Previous application that was received requested that one of the build-outs is removed with only ten residents consulted. This was deemed unfeasible, as removing one of the build-outs only would increase speeds between the remaining build-outs. Further, if all the build-outs were removed, then this would likely very result in an increase in vehicle speeds and may have a detrimental impact on road safety in this area, particularly given Broadway is a wide, straight section of road. In the previous three years in which we have whole complete verified accident data, two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one, there were just two injury recorded accidents on Broadway. We are currently looking at installing additional reflective keep-left-right boulders at the build-outs, which are designed to collapse or rebound on impact. These bollards would help highlight the build-outs to approaching drivers, complementing the signage and road markings already in place.
Thank you councillor Foggall, councillor Corley, do you have a supplementary question?
It's, I understand what you're saying, however, since them chicanes went in, the accident rate have increased. So, and I've had the numerous site visits, and sometimes the officers agree that they're causing more harm than good, and others are saying different. However, when a police car runs into a chicane because it is not very well visible, then you then have to start asking questions. Clearly, they are not working the way that they implied and thought they should do. So the question would be, can this be looked at at a different alternative? The chicanes are not working. Five accidents within months this year alone.
Councillor Foggall.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The figures that we have for accidents show only three in the last two years, not five in the last year. The only accidents that are recorded are ones that police are called to. And therefore, that's the accident rate that the council works to. If you have other evidence, then it would be great if you could provide it to the highways officers. As I said, they are looking at ways of highlighting the, the build-outs so that they are more visible. And the, the thoughts of the highways department is that removing the, the build-outs would actually make the road a lot more dangerous.
Thank you councillor Foggall. Now, as agreed, we, agreed that question six and seven would be moved forward. So we'll move to question six now, and that is from, a question from councillor Richardson to councillor Foggall, Cabinet Member for Economic Growth.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's not economic growth, highways and transport.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The question was to councillor Gallagher.
Yeah, I, I think it was agreed that, that the question relates to councillor Foggall's portfolio and not councillor Gallagher's.
Okay, that's interesting, because he's answered the question twice previously. Anyway, I'll take the question as read and wait for the answer, thank you.
Councillor Foggall.
I don't have it on, on paper, so I'll probably read it off up here. I won't go into the long history of this site, which was given planning permission spread over three planning applications determined through two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirteen. The current issue is in terms of the council being able to adopt and relate to ongoing remedial works, which the developer knows about but has not yet completed. A key issue has been the street lighting that was installed on-site, but was not to the approved standard design, and as such, significant work had to be carried out in order for it to be acceptable. I've been advised that the lighting has now undergone electrical testing and final inspections in preparation for adoption. These issues do now appear to be nearing an end, and a site visit is due to take place with the developer, Keemo, shortly. Further, to the final site visit inspections, adoption will be imminent.
Thank you councillor Foggall, councillor Richardson, do you have a supplementary?
I do, thanks. That's the third time we've received the same answer over the last year or so, so apologies if I don't hold my breath. We've been waiting around nine years now, and, and quite a lot of residents want to start withholding the council tax because they're not receiving proper council services. We're looking forward to another summer of cars speeding through the estate because we can't access any Safer Streets allocation. So I would really like the council to take some action now against the builder. And my supplementary question is, what are we doing to prevent this exact scenario happening on Kirkleatham Green, where the builder seems totally uninterested with the defects in the properties? And I expect the same disinterest with rectifying defects on the estate, thank you.
Thank you councillor Richardson, councillor Foggall.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As has been explained before, this is a legal issue, and it is the developer who has to make the road up to adoptable standard. All the council can do is inspect it. And once it's inspected and agreed that it is the same standard, the correct standard, then we can, we can then adopt it. We have got no, let me finish, we have got no legal way of trying to force a developer to bring forward the adoption. It is the developer's decision, nothing to do with council. All we can do...
Is there a breach of the rules councillor Richardson? I don't think there is. Councillor Foggall, have you finished answering the question?
No, basically, council will keep going trying to adopt the, the estate. The estate, any new development cannot be adopted until it is completed.
Now, I don't know when the the uh, the Council Richardson keeps mentioning eight years. I would suspect that's from when it was first uh started, not when it was completed. But uh until the site is completed and to the correct standard, the council cannot do anything to uh bring it on board. We have to wait until they decide that they want to try and do it.
Thank you, Council F- Fogle. Uh question seven again is from qu- uh Council Richardson uh to Councilor Fogle. Can I clarify that? Okay, uh from highways and transport, Council Richardson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm not sure why it's a highways and transport answer because it's about bins. Um but I asked Council Hunt at the last council meeting and he said he'd sort it out and I'm just getting the same answer again. We can't empty a bin on an adopted land. Actually, we can. Um I so I'll take the question as read. Um can somebody sort it out?
Council Fogle?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Until the land has been adopted, the council is una- is unable to undertake any maintenance on the site or install the tub bins. But as adoption is imminent, then the issue of the bins should be resolved soon. However, do ne- do need to highlight that developers have a choice as to whether to transfer open space to the council or set up a management com- company to undertake the maintenance. The developer's option is not clear at this point. The the issue with putting bins out is a matter of uh legality in that the land isn't owned by us and therefore we cannot put it out. It has to be by, when it's adopted, we can then take it on board and do the uh put bins in place.
Council Richardson, do you have a supplementary question?
Um so my supplementary question is, what are we going to do about it? We've been advised for years the council can take legal action. It can go after the developer. We have got options open to us, so why are we just sitting back and doing nothing about it?
Council Fogle?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. If you know of a legal procedure that we can follow to approach it, then I would be great if you could inform the co- the officers how to do it. Because as far as we are concerned, there is no legal option for us to approach the developer. It's up to them to approach us to adopt the uh the 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 development.
Thank you, Council Fogle. Moving on to question four, uh questions from Council Massey to Council Anigan, leader of the council, Council Massey.
I feel like everyone else has said as right, so I have to say the same thing, so that's right.
You don't, who do I have to? Okay. Council Anigan?
Um due to the current economic conditions, the council faces significant financial challenges, as I'm sure everyone in this chamber knows. Inflation has risen sharply to reach a forty year high, causing huge pressures on council budgets. Interest rates have risen steeply, increasing the cost of council borrowing. Rising demand for council statutory services, particularly children, social care, has caused us significant pressures on the council finance. The council budget for twenty three twenty four has had to provide for additional pressures of nearly twenty three million pounds. With the council funding not keeping pace with this, it's been necessary to agree an extensive savings programme to ensure essential services that some of our most vulnerable people rely on can be maintained. Amongst many other things, this saving programme included a reduction to members' water allowance, maintaining some investment to allow councillors to continue to contribute to the types of activity that you've highlighted, Council Massey. Budget proposals including the saving programmes were consulted on. Revisions to these proposals were made in line with the main theme of that consultation and of the feedback that we received. And this actually came full council for all members to vote on where the budget was approved. Of course, this involves some very difficult decisions. And of course, I'm concerned that we're needing to make reductions on spending in some areas. We would all rather be in a position of investing extra money to deliver more improvements. But the current economic conditions and the funding we receive or agree, it it's making this absolutely impossible. We've tried to strike the right balance and listened to the feedback we received on key issues like council tax, parking charges and reducing costs where we can. And we've also had a legal duty to work in the financial reality of the circumstances that we've got. This means setting a budget for next year, which we can afford, and a medium term financial plan. That is due consideration of the council's financial sustainability and resilience. And recognizing this, that the next few years are going to be continue to be extremely challenging. As I mentioned, the difficult choices we've had to make were brought to this chamber for all councillors to have their say. I'm thankful that there was recognition of the circumstances and we're having to work in and the budget proposed uh was approved going forward. Very difficult where we are at the moment, very difficult and what we've actually got, Council Massey. Um inflation is still running at eleven percent and everyone is feeling the pressure out there. So this was although unfortunate, it was a decision that we made. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Council Anigan. Council Massey, have you got a supplementary question?
Uh yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I appreciate that members have discussed the budget previously, we all sat in here. Um I personally didn't vote for it, but I know that some did. But I think even those who did vote for the budget, there's a danger sometimes that these small items that sit below the line of major events that we discuss, like libraries or car parking or whatever it may be, can occasionally slip under the radar. And I appreciate all the points that Council Anigan made about inflation, cost of living, energy crises. But they're the exact same problems that community groups are facing that this funding has often gone to support. So I guess what I'm asking for is something in the new administration, whether I'm here, whether you're here, whether any of us are here, to try and discuss this issue about how we get funding to our community groups from this council more clearly. Because the council allowances have public realms going to be stopped and I think this is a fairly apolitical issue. I think we're all concerned potentially about the possibilities for our community groups to keep the lights on, keep the heating on, whatever that might be, or support our residents. So I guess I'm asking for a commitment that potentially we can look at, not necessarily this exact policy, but something to do with community groups and support for them in the new administration.
Thank you, Council Massey. Council Anigan?
To make it absolutely clear to the uh members of the council and um the pu- public that the budget was presented with all the details of what was actually going to be expended, what was going to be raised in in ta- taxation. And I think Council Massey talking about under the radar is totally inappropriate and out of order.
Okay, you've made your point, Council Anigan. Thank you. Count?
Point of personal explanation as I was named. I think the term slipped under the radar doesn't imply that people didn't know about it. It implies that the realistically, we have so many hours in the day to discuss these particular issues. And the issues that we discussed in the chamber when the budget was being presented were around car parking, libraries, trade unions, whatever they may be. I am not saying for any instance that members didn't know this was in there. I'm just saying that the majority of debate on that day was not about this one issue. And I think that's why I brought the question today. It's not to say that it wasn't there. I'm aware it was there. I mentioned this in scrutiny that it was there. I complained about this in scrutiny that it was in there. But I think on the day, we're going to talk about big ticket items, so that's my explanation.
Thank you, Council Massey. Council Anigan?
Well, Massey, thank you for that. And I think every single person in this chamber actually agrees with you about our communities and our residents and the small help that we can give them. The next administration perhaps will need to have a look at this going forward. The financial situation that we actually face and will face over the next twelve month, twenty four month um is going to be crucial. Um so I'm quite sure we'll all have a look at that. Whoever's sat in this council chamber um after next week uh and see where we can go. Everybody absolutely appreciates what our residents and what our groups do out there and any little bit of help that we can give them. Uh I mean, they actually appreciate it. So we'll see what what happens and and see if there's a change out of central government that they're going to give us some extra money. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Anigan. And our final question is from Council Turner to Councilor Kay, the cabinet member for health and wellbeing. Council Turner?
Thank you. Um I welcome the fact that this council has recently approved a revised workplace menopause policy for all its employees. It is a challenge that can too often be overlooked despite it ultimately affecting around half of the world's population and probably the other half inadvertently. The changes reflect a much more positive, proactive and modern approach to the problems some women face. Can the cabinet member confirm that this new approach will be replicated for members and the recording of reasons for absences be removed from all records? We are all adults and as a woman who was hit like a train by a menopause, I really don't see why, or anyone else for that matter, should have attendance figures used against me because I don't want to publicly declare my personal medical issues and I don't want to knowingly make a false declaration. A simple apology for absence should surely be su- sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Turner. Councilor Kay?
Yes, uh Councilor Turner, I don't really think this is a question for me, actually. It's an H R matter, not a health matter. But nevertheless, I'll deal with it. I agree absolutely with your sentiments. I appreciate that the menopause is an extremely serious issue for many women and for some, it is undoubtedly debilitating. But as the present absence arrangements were quite recently approved via a motion at full council, it would be inappropriate for me to promote changes, particularly during the closing days of our present administration. I agree this council was right to approve a modern sensitive menopause policy for its employees. I agree that as far as possible, members should be treated like staff with similar protections and safeguards in place. I agree that members should not have to declare personal details for their absence for meetings. To use your words, a simple apology for absence should and does suffice. If you look at the matrix, you will see that many members simply apologize without giving a reason. This is a perfectly a- acceptable option. I do not agree that the present arrangements re- the recording of councillors' attendance needs reviewing. If a member feels impelled to give a reason whilst maintaining their privacy, the matrix key contains neutral options like other and personal commitment. So if members do not wish to give further details, they are in no way required to do so. There is absolutely no pressure on members to make false declarations or to reveal medical or personal information. The matrix key even explains that, quote, "Full details may not be provided for reasons of confidentiality," unquote. In short, the present system is sufficiently private and flexible to cater for your concerns. Even though I'm not a film critic, I have become a keen student of the matrix over the past couple of days. I suggest a small tweak which in no way would undermine the original motion. Let's get rid of the bright red cross of disapproval for naughty boys and girls who fail to put in apologies. Councillors are not schoolkids and should be treated with respect whether they apologize or not.
Thank you, uh Council Kay. Council Turner, do you have a supplementary question?
Can I ask then if your response is actually that I must um make ibdibdib to choose how my menopause is affecting me that day? Thank you.
Council uh can Councilor Kay please uh answer?
As I said, it's not a health matter from my perspective. It's an H R matter. And you must choose the option and uh number that you want to use if you do so wish. But most people just put in a put simply apologies. And that's actually in your, in the original question. That's what you're asking to do. The option is already there.
Thank you, Councilor Kay. Uh that is the end of our uh questions. Uh before I close the meeting, I just wish to say a few words. Uh as this is the last Borough Council meeting I will chair, I wish to say a few words of thanks. I wish to thank John and Steve for their support and guidance uh through these meetings. Malcolm, my deputy mayor, as my backup, who I'm sure will be pleased was not required. My thanks and gratitude to the democratic service staff whose assistance is invaluable in ensuring meetings proceed smoothly. I've strived whilst chairing the Borough Council meetings to be fair and impartial impartial to all. I think I have succeeded in them being businesslike and less time consuming. I haven't always got it right, but thank you for your patience and understanding when that has occurred. We have seven councillors who will not be seeking reelection on the fourth of May. May I on the council's behalf wish them all well and thank them for their hard work and dedication, not only to this council but to the residents they have served over the years. To those who are standing at the election, I wish you every success. Lastly, I wish to thank you, my fellow councillors, for giving me the opportunity to serve you as mayor for the past year. I cannot express what an honour, joy and unforgettable experience it has been. Who would have thought that within my year of office, we would have been celebrating a historic Platinum Jubilee, the loss of a much loved monarch and the coronation of another. The whole year has been a wonderful experience for Sue and I, with the added bonus of it being shared with my mum, who was my escort when the mayoress was working. The memories of it this past year will never leave me. Thank you.